All right, good evening, everyone. Zoning Board of Appeals for April 30th, 2020 is in session. Being that it's a virtual meeting, I know we all got this letter from the town. We need to state our names, the board members that are here, so everybody knows that we're here. And secondly, if anybody loses their connection, including myself, we pause the meeting and wait for them to come back. Those are the two things. And votes will be done by roll call. So we're all on the same page with that. So if the board members, please, just say that you're here. I'm the chair, Rob Dugan. Nancy?
Nancy Rego.
Dan?
Dan Texera.
Ray?
Ray Lasecki.
And Jerry is not here. Melissa Johnson is our secretary. All right, first item on the agenda, approval of a minutes from February 27th, 2020.
Make a motion to approve.
Hang on one second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Yep, so that was, uh, the motion was made by Nancy, seconded by Dan, and approved by everybody. Okay. First item on the agenda, Melissa?
Michael A. Sierra, on behalf of Michael A. Sierra and Delia A. Sierra, for variance from section 4130, appendix B, for side yard setbacks of the Tuxbury zoning bylaw to construct a 24 by 24 garage as shown on plans filed with this board. So property is located at 147 Bradford Road, assesses map 111, lot 50, zoned residential.
All right, now, Michael, I see that you're here.
Yes.
You could state your name and address for the record.
Michael Sierra, 147 Bradford Road, Tuxbury Mass. 01876.
Yeah, could you get that, Melissa? Okay. Um, Michael, if you would, just tell us a little bit about what you're doing.
Well, the house, we just purchased the house last, uh, June. And, uh, the reason we purchased it is because it has two garage. But after we purchased the, the house, trying to use the garage is nearly impossible. There's not enough driveway to make a turn into the garage, the way that the garages are situated on the side of the house. So we thought of doing the garages, so when you come from the street, you drive right into it. So my wife and I are retired, and, uh, it's kind of hard for us to make these turns to go into the garage. These garages are very narrow, so we would like to drive in and drive out straight from the street if possible. For convenience. Also, we wanted to look like it was built with the house. It, it's not going to look like, uh, in addition, it's going to look like part of the house, uh, match the house, and, uh, what a good, good appearance for the neighborhood.
So you have a garage there now, or you don't have a garage there?
Yes, we do have two car garage. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, we have a two car garage, but coming from the street, when you get to the house, it's like you have to bend that right turn, and the cars that we have don't, kind of don't make the turn. You have to go back and forth, and it's a tree right there. And to go into the garage, you have to make several maneuvers to go to the first one. They go to the farther up, the, the, the farther up into the driveway, uh, only a small car can go in there. So basically, it's been useless for the eight, nine months that we've been here, 10 months that we've been here.
Where is the garage now?
It's, 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 you're facing the houses on the left side of the house.
So you're going to remove the existing garage?
No, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, we'll use the garages as additional rooms, like, we don't have a cellar and an exercise room, and we put in the two garages attached to the house on where it's now the driveway. Right now, we have the driveway in there.
Yep.
And we, we would like to put the garages right where the driveway is, so that we, we can drive in and drive out without making any turns. Just simplify things.
So you have an attached garage now, and you're gonna have a garage next to that one?
Correct.
Okay, I understand.
Just, just to clarify, the garage currently is under your house? It's not at the side, it's under your house?
All right.
Correct.
Yes, may I speak?
Sure.
Um, it's, it's currently a split entry house. It's like a Georgian split with the big tall columns, and the garage is currently under the house. It's a, a side entry garage.
That, that did make it a little different for me.
Yep, it's not like a two car garage, and it's attached now, and he wants to add another two car to it.
Right.
Can, can I just have your name and address for the record? Sorry.
Yep, my name is Robert Scott. I'm at 37 Richardson Street in Billerica, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
I'm, uh, the contractor.
Yeah, I guess when you're not sitting at the table, I don't realize who's together. Is there anyone else here for you, Michael?
Uh, no, that I know of, no.
Okay.
Just Robert and I.
I thought we had a called in user.
Yep, we'll, we'll get that in a minute.
If you want, I can hold up a picture of the house on a computer if you want.
Uh, is it, can you upload it?
Um, yep. I could try and upload it, I don't know if I can upload it to you.
Do you have it? That's obviously not the computer you're using for the, the video.
Right.
You don't have it on that computer?
No, I brought my, uh, I brought one of my secretary's computers tonight.
I understand. Um...
I, I could probably email it.
Email it to yourself.
Okay, I'm not that, I do wood, I don't do computers too much.
Well, I, I see your, your technical department just came in behind you. Mine's over my shoulder. So...
Um...
Yeah, if you could, um, if you look on the bottom of the screen, I just looked at this the other day, if you look at the bottom of the screen where you have mute and stop your video and that stuff, the thing with, with the arrow pointing up is share content.
Okay.
Bottom of the screen, you see where it says share content? If you open that picture up in the background, just open it up on your computer, when you do the share content, you'll see it, and then you can just click on it, and it'll share it to all of us, and I'll have a look at it.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have buttons on the bottom. Oh, I, I got it here, yep. Share content, okay.
All right, when you get that going, we can, uh, we can have a look at it.
Okay.
So one thing, um, I think voting members on this one will be myself, Nancy, and Dan, you want to go on this one? And Ray will, will have you on the next one. But feel free to comment and ask questions, Ray. All right, any more questions, board members, anything? I'd like to see that picture of the...
I'd like to see that, yeah. Do you have any pictures of the plans? I'd like to see those.
I, I think we submitted those, the only thing I do have handy is a plot plan that I just printed tonight.
Yeah, that I have, I don't have pictures, do you have pictures of the plan, Rob? I don't see those.
I do not. But I have, I have what she, uh, she emailed us open, let me see if it's on that.
What, what do you need from the plans? I may have it myself.
Well, we'd like to...
A picture of...
Like your building.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have it.
I don't either.
I have a picture of the plot plan.
Well, maybe, uh, maybe your builder can help us out a little bit, let me find that picture again. Is it a typical 24 by 24, one and a half stories tall garage?
Yeah, it's a typical 24 by 24, one story garage, no room on top, uh, gable, basically the same going, the same way as the house tying into the house.
And what's, Michael, what's on the other side of, um, that property line where the proposed garage is going?
Absolutely nothing.
No neighbor over there?
Well, there, there is a house approximately, it has to be, uh, probably 20 feet away, but it's... towards the end of the garage, it's nothing, behind it.
Down.
Robert, you can explain a bit of...
Robert wasn't paying attention, he's still trying to upload that picture.
Yeah, we're trying to upload it. Okay, what, what was the question?
Explain, explain what's next to the garage.
Um, where the garage is being built.
Where the garage is being, it's just grass, there's, um, there's a fence that's there. Uh, currently, there's a fence that comes off the back corner of the house, and that comes over, well, roughly to the property line, and there's a big tree that's right there, that's part of the problem.
I'm more interested what's on the other side of the property line, your neighbors. What's over there?
Uh, grass.
Just land.
How far away is the house? The neighbor's house?
From the property line, 12... From the property line is 12 feet. From the end of the garage is going to be 20 feet, 20, 20 and a half, the house itself.
I, I think what he's asking is your neighbor's house. I, I've only been there a few times because we haven't, haven't really been down at work there.
Yeah, from, from the fence to the house is 12 feet.
Yeah, I, I think he's answering what I want. Your neighbor's house is 12 feet from the property line.
Yes.
Hopefully, it's 15, but we're in the neighborhood. It's, it's not, it's not 100 feet away, it's not on the other property line.
I didn't measure, but I'm assuming.
It's probably 15.
Yeah, all right. Well, you know what, I have the plot in here, hold on, hold on.
Okay.
I'm, I'm okay with that answer. I'm okay, you don't have to go looking for that.
All right. Robert, should you open it up?
If you open, I lost Nancy, we gotta pause. All right, so I'm just waiting for Nancy to come back.
Okay.
Whoop, whoop. Wow, you got something going there. You getting there?
So if I have a picture on the phone, can I share it with you?
A picture of what?
Of the house.
The neighbor's house?
No, my house.
Uh, that's, well, what's Robert, what's Robert showing us here?
Okay, okay.
Well, we, we're still, we're still waiting because, uh, Nancy's not back yet, right?
Yes, exactly, but I was asking you, did, can I load a picture that I have on the phone?
If you can get it, if you can get it on the computer screen that y'all using to do this video, then you can share it with us.
How do you share it?
Um, you open it up on your computer, so you have it open up in the background. Now, Michael's gone. Where's everybody going? All right, Michael, you're back.
You'll get, I'm here, I'm here.
So what you do is you open it on the computer that you're using.
Yep.
Nancy's back, good. You open it on the computer that you're using, on the bottom of your screen, yep, there you go, Robert, good job.
Oh, I see it, I see it.
Mute, stop video, and then share content?
Well, right there, that's the picture.
Okay.
How do you open this now? Here it is, yeah, that's the house.
Okay. All right, so that's your computer off right there.
Yeah, so when I purchased that home, I thought that it had enough room to go into the garage, but then when you physically open the door and try to go in with a car, because of that tree in there, you have to maneuver the car three or four times, back and forth.
So you want to put a garage? I know you can't see my...
Right there where the arrow is.
Yep.
Yes.
You're gonna put the garage right there, you're gonna make those two garage bays room.
Disappear, yeah.
And then just add a garage so you can pull straight in.
Exact.
Okay.
And it's not going to be any bigger than the driveway is, any wider. The driveway is pretty wide.
Right. Okay. Um, any more questions, board members? Let me just, um, if we're done with that picture, I'd like to get it off the screen because that really narrowed my screen down, and I can't see that everyone is still here, unless I scroll.
Quick, quick question, Mr., is it Sierra? Am I pronouncing that right?
Yes, yes.
So from that picture, your neighbor's house, did I hear you correctly in stating that it's set back further in the lot, it's not at the exact same depth into the lot as your house?
Yeah, it's, it's back, yeah. The house is a little bit further back, yeah.
All right, anything else, board members? At this time, we still have to do the open to the public.
I don't have anything. Dan, Ray?
I'm okay right now.
Nothing from Ray.
Okay. So being a public hearing, we'll open it to the public. I hear there's a caller on the line, like a radio jockey. Brian, did we have someone that wanted to talk about this?
Not yet, Mr. Chairman, uh, I would give it, uh, a few seconds, uh, here it comes now, just because there's a delay, so for the future, but here he is right now.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
All right, so the, the caller is just audio, not video, right?
Correct.
All right. Hello, caller, can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Hello?
Yeah, hello. Could, could we have your name and address for the record, please?
Hello?
Brian, do you want to try to talk to him?
Uh, can, can you hear the chairman? Can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Gattano Leo Altovino. I can't hear you on my phone, I have to have your TV on.
No, could you please mute the TV actually, because that, that might be confusing you because there's a delay?
Yeah, yeah, it's muted, but I can't, I can only hear you.
He cannot hear us?
Oh, I can't hear you now, yes.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure that...
Oh, no worries.
Okay, so, um, my name is Gattano Leo Altovino, uh, I hope I'm Leo, and, um, um, I am actually, uh, Mr. Sharpe's neighbor, the, the house that you guys have been talking about next to the garage. Um, you want me to continue?
Yes, please.
What is the street address, please?
You're breaking up, say it again?
Your street address?
157 Bradford Road.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to hear, um, how close your house is, is it closer to the street or closer to your backyard, and how you feel about the property going up next to you?
So my house is, is closer to the backyard, it's a little back a little bit from the circle. When they built the circle, um, um, my house is a little bit back from, uh, Mr. Sharpe's house. And, um, from the fence that you see, uh, from that picture you had on the video, on the screen, from the, from the, from that fence to my house is 15 feet, which I believe it's, uh, it's a legal, um, uh, what they call it, um, footage that it requires, for, you know, for these, for the zoning. So my, my concern is, um, you know, building this garage that will go beyond the zoning laws, it will literally be right almost where the fence is, and it's gonna be really next to, uh, my bedroom, and, um, I'm afraid that, um, the, uh, building a structure like that will block the view of the house as you enter the street. Second, um, it will probably, um, jeopardize my, uh, my future sale of the house because it's so close to it, it really has that much room, um, after this garage gets built. Um, I will respect the laws of the distance between houses in the neighborhood, um, I'd like also say that I've been, I've been here for 27 years, I love this neighborhood, and I'd like to keep it, um, as, um, as it was intended to be. I don't want to, um, you know, um, avoid or make Mr. Sharpe not build anything that he wants to build on, on his property, however, the, um, the distance must be respected.
Is there anything else you'd like to tell us?
Um, I, I, um, just basically, just a little way that, um, I'm afraid that if this does go through, the, uh, I will, uh, have issues in the future, um, trying to sell the house if I, if I do want to. Um, that's it for now.
Okay, well, thank you for taking the time to call in, I appreciate that.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right. Anyone else, Brian?
Uh, no one else, Mr. Chairman, but I'd give it, uh, maybe 30 seconds or so, just to see if someone else calls in after.
Okay. Any more questions, board members?
None right now.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
How long have you said you lived in the house? About 10 months?
Me, yes.
10 months. Anyway, we can squeeze this down to, you had 15 feet from your property line?
Um, what is it now, eight and a half feet away from the property line, correct?
Seven foot five inches.
Seven feet away from the property line. The thing is, i- if you go any smaller, you can't open the doors once you go in with two cars. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to accommodate, uh, the distance, but I, I was trying to, you know, if you go in, if you go into the garage, I wanted to be able to use the garage, in other words, I wanted to be able to get out of the car.
Right, I understand that.
Um, the, uh, the use of the garage as a residential garage, it's not like it's gonna be a body shop or any, you know, it's, there's no commercial use there, it's just a residential garage.
Right, but this, this is why I was asking where that neighbor's house was, because now you've got what should have been 30 feet from structure to structure, now you're at 22. Follow what I'm saying? No matter, no matter what it's used for, it's still a building that's too close.
Well, this is why we apply for the variance.
I understand that. I understand.
I, I don't see how we claims that the garage will block his view, we said, we in the rotary, so the, the way the houses are situated around the rotary, how is it gonna block his view? I don't get it. I don't get that.
Well, what, what I took away from his phone call is that, um, the zoning bylaws say 15 feet from the property line to the structure, and he's lived in the house, I believe he said 20 years.
Yeah, he's like 23 years, yes.
23 years. Having his house being 24, almost 50 feet away from your house, now you're gonna put it, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna take half of that, more than half of that distance away.
What I'm getting, the point that I'm getting at, if, if I use the driveway the way it is now, I am, the end of the driveway is about three feet away from the property line. And if I do the garage, I'm gonna be seven feet away from the property line.
I understand that, sir, because quite a difference between a driveway and a garage.
What, what should I do to accommodate, uh, the gentleman? What do you advise me to?
Man, I know 24 foot wide is a typical two car garage, that's just, that's a cookie cutter garage, 24 by 24.
All right.
Um, I, I don't know, I don't know what, what it would take to make the neighbor accept what you're trying to do.
So the other way, if, if I have to stay with the, within the, within the 13, what is it, 15 feet, you said?
Yes, sir, 15 feet.
So 6 feet, 24, 16 feet, that's a single car garage.
It's a single car garage, I heard somebody say.
I'm sorry?
It would be a single car garage.
That is not, not good enough for me. But I have to build it on the back of the garage, on the back of the property. I have the land to do it on the back, I didn't want to do that, because they look awful. I wanted to do it on the front of the house to make it look nice for the neighborhood. But if I had to do it on the backyard, I'll do it on the backyard, no big deal. I'm just gonna go bigger on the backyard, because I have plenty of land there, and hopefully that will go through, what can I do? I need a two car garage, 65 years old, I can't park out with the snow, and cleaning the car is impossible.
I understand, sir, but still, we still have...
It was winter, and it was a killer there, cleaning the snow, I can't do it. All right.
All right, anything else from the board members?
I don't have anything.
No.
All right. Is there anything else you'd like to say to us, Michael, before we have a vote?
Uh, no, I would like you to accommodate me if possible, but, you know, it's, it's... Uh, no, I would like you to accommodate me if possible, but you know, it's up to you guys.
Okay. All right, so it is.
I've planned this now for five months and we're supposed to have this on February 26th. Then they moved it March 30th and now to today and, uh, it's all right, no big deal.
Right. I understand your frustration. Not a lot we can do about the, uh, that big virus thing that's going around.
Yeah, right now.
Anything else, board members? If nothing else, I'll take a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
All right, so Nancy made the motion.
I'll second.
Dan has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. I have somebody who'd like to make a motion. Or is there any discussion? I'm sorry, I'll get ahead of myself.
I don't have anything.
I don't either.
All right. If somebody'd like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Michael A. Serra on behalf of Michael A. Serra and Delia Serra for a variance from section 4130, appendix B for side yard setbacks if the Tewksbury zoning bylaws to construct a 24 by 24 garage as shown on plans filed with the, with the board. Said plans is located at 147 Bradford Road, assessors map 111 lot 50, zoned residential.
All right, so Nancy made the motion?
I second.
Dan has seconded. All right, so we'll do a roll, a roll call vote. Dan?
Nay.
Nancy?
Yes.
And chair is a nay. So that does not pass.
Okay.
Got that, Melissa? Okay. All right, sorry, Michael. Good luck.
So it's, it's only two votes? One's a a, one's a.
I voted. Three votes. Dan, Dan, Nancy, and myself voted. You got two noes and one yes.
Okay.
So that doesn't pass. All right. Next item, Melissa?
American Outdoor Advertising Company, MA LLC, on behalf of Pete Oliver, 150 Daskum LLC, in care of AEW Capital Management for a variance from section 5291 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaws to install an electronic message center sign billboard as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 150 Daskum Road, assessors map 113, lot 26, zoned heavy industrial.
All right. Who's there for this one?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Jamie Cutlass. I'm the attorney for American Outdoor Advertising, 1147 Main Street, Tewksbury.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay. Uh, tell us a little bit about what you're doing.
All right, on this one, we're trying to elect, um, erect an electronic billboard on the property, uh, right next to Route 93. Um, it's approximately 165 feet high with two faces, 14 by 48, and, uh, for advertising to the motorists on 93. Um, we do need variance.
One second. 160 feet high, how much?
Uh, the, the, the pole is 165 feet wide and the two faces on top of the pole are 14 feet by 48 feet.
14 by 48. I thought you said 45 by 48.
Oh, yeah, 14 by 48. So we're, we're before the board to try to get a variance from section 5291 of the zoning bylaws because there are some residents within the thousand-foot radius of the electronic billboard. And just background, I just say one quick thing. American Outdoor Advertising, they were the ones that came to the town and worked with the town manager and the planning board and the selectmen to put this article before the townspeople who voted it in. So they've been working on this for a couple of years now. And we also did go to Conservation Commission and, uh, because there are wetlands on the property and did receive a negative determination from them that we did not have to file a notice of intent when they approved us for this. Um, but we think it's a very good project for the town. They'll pay, uh, thousands of dollars annually for the use of the, uh, electronic billboard. The town will benefit over a million dollars over a 20-year period of time. Plus they'll dedicate, uh, space on the billboard for any town or municipal purposes, um, that they want to use. Uh, we think it does meet the requirements for a variance. It's, uh, the houses, there are some in Tewksbury, they're well over 750 feet away. Uh, it's the heavily wooded area with extremely tall pine trees and other trees that, uh, would be in between those houses and, uh, the electronic billboard. Uh, the signs would be angled so they only face 93 and away from any residences. And, uh, we think it does not violate the intent of the bylaw or is, is not detrimental to the public good. So we think it's a, a good project. It'll benefit the town and, uh, that's why we're seeking your approval for the variance. And we'll answer any questions that you may have.
Rob, can you announce who's voting on this one? You're on mute.
Me, you, and Ray.
Okay.
So that would be me, the chair, Nancy, and Ray. You all right with that, Ray? Nancy? Good?
I'm on.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right. So here, here's, here we go. You said you're gonna be 725 feet away from that resident?
Yes, I think, or even, I think the residents in Tewksbury are further than 750. They're just inside the 1,000. The houses will be more than 750 away. The edge of the lot, I think, is right at 750.
Okay, so you're, let me, let me read it again. Hold on. I got the book here. All right, it says 1,000 feet of a residential or multifamily district for use. So that, that goes with the property line?
Yes, yeah.
So you're 275 feet short?
Approximately, I'd say yes.
Now how about, not that, not that it's our concern, it kinda is. You said the, the property in Tewksbury. What about the properties in Andover?
Right, the Andover are a little closer. They're on the other side of 93. They're probably approximately, I estimate it's outside the 500, but they're probably 600 feet, uh, the Andover properties.
All right. Now here's, here's the problem I'm having. This is the second one we've had. This is the second billboard going up in town, if I'm correct, right?
Yes, off of 495, yes.
We put one up off of 495.
Well, we didn't construct it yet, but you guys.
We had that meeting and that one was just a little too close. And now here's the second one, it's just a little too close. Can we get this to 1,000 feet? And there's a, there's a lot of property over there.
Uh, I don't, I, they tried. We, when we went with, uh, to conservation, we moved it actually to accommodate them because of wetlands where, there were a lot of wetlands there. So we moved it at the request of conservation, but it's not possible, I don't think, to get it outside the 1,000 feet because of the, uh, the existing California Paints building is right there. It's on their property and, uh, and given the way the wetlands were, I don't think you could, you know, we, we did work with conservation to make sure it didn't impact the wetlands. So that, that was, they determined that was probably the best location for it.
Right. Now, how, how far was it before you went to conservation?
Oh, it was, it was, it was in the 50-foot buffer zone. Oh, it was still, it was still probably just a 50-foot difference at that time. You know, it wasn't, it was probably 800 feet, but, uh, well, it's probably, actually it was probably closer. So we did move it back, it was probably 700 feet. We moved it back 50 to 75 feet, but it couldn't, it can't go any further back. Otherwise it's, the California Paints building is right there. And the parking lot is right there.
So since, since you're bringing up the California Paints business, if, if you look at the locust map, there is a cul-de-sac, um, that has vacant lots on it. And all those lots are within about 150 feet to 200 feet of where you're gonna erect the sign.
Oh, yeah, but I believe tho, those are all unbuildable. That, because, uh, they've been there for years and that's, I think there's a, a river that goes right through there or a brook that would make those all unbuildable lots. You know, that was our view, uh, take on those. They, they've been there forever and, uh, I think there's a, a strong brook that runs right through and, and it's, that's virtually all wetlands right there. So yes, I, I don't disagree with that at all, but they would be, uh, you know, unbuildable lots, basically. It's just, that's the wooded buffer area, basically, there.
In, in your map, it states that it's zoned residential.
It, it is. Yes, it is. I, it's just that they couldn't build on it, so I would try to distinguish it that way. I mean, you could never put a house on those, on those lots there. And that's a paper street, it's not an actual street. You know, there's no, no, it is not even a road, there's nothing there, there's just woods. That was just on somebody's plan. So it was really just the houses on Vale Street. You know, uh, those houses right there that you can see right there, they're inside the 1,000 radius.
That's that, uh, lot 152 and 144?
Yeah, yeah, those are also, yeah. 144, it looks like the house is outside, but the, the lot is definitely within side. If we could have moved it, we would have moved it, you know, we just.
So Dan, you're talking about, you're talking about lot 152? Or are you talking about lots over like 14, 12, 16? Which one are you talking about?
If you're looking at the lot 152, if you look to the right of that, you see a bunch of empty lots and there's just a, there's a road in the plan, but it's, he's saying it's a paper road.
Right.
If, if.
The same goes though.
On, I don't know what they are, and I mean, it just says zoned residential, if they're ever built upon.
Right, but the top one is the same, Dan. If you look up above, you get the same there too.
On the Andover side?
Uh, right by, uh, 111412. That whole area there is, um, residential as well. And that's close.
Oh, that, that is the Andover side, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm on mute. I just have a problem that you yourself said you, you worked with the town to get this, this zoning to pass. And as the second one, we're already, we're already doing variances.
Well, right, the, the, the residents, a resident did amend it on the floor of town meeting. And, you know, without, really didn't work with the planning board on that just at the time of town meeting, just raised this. And, uh, you know, the people didn't pass it, um, but that wasn't part of the original, uh, our original work with the planning board. And the planning board, you know, they, it wasn't their proposal either for this 1,000-foot, uh, rule, but a resident did put it in, the people did vote for it.
Right.
But that, that isn't, it's a very wooded area there. I mean, the houses, it'd be hard pressed for them to even see the billboard.
Sorry, making all the noise, Dan.
Oh, sorry.
Got a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Yeah, with the orientation of the signs themselves, would properties would be directly affected by the light of the signs? I know we're aiming them toward the highway, but are any of these gonna be line of sight to somebody's residence?
I, I, I went down there and I stood in their front yards and everything and because of the way the trees are so high across the street from Vale, it'd be hard pressed for me to think that they could see, you know, even see the billboard or see the light, uh, from the billboard. And the way the houses were, I, I don't think they would. It's not, I can't say it's impossible, but I, it, it just looked to me like it'd be impossible because the street veil is pretty narrow right there in the woods. We have those, that residential pot that's all wooded, unbuildable. Those trees are 50, 75, 80 feet high. And, uh, it'd be hard pressed for me to see, that you could see through them to see to the sign. I, I don't think it'd be possible.
That was the only question I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, what was the, what was the planning board's original distance for this?
Yeah, they didn't have it, they didn't have a requirement. And, uh, yeah, they didn't have one. So when the, when the resident, uh, when it was a former member of the planning board, when she proposed it, it was just a, you know, she just picked a number out of a hat. There was, um, really, you know, she didn't, uh, they didn't have extensive discussions about it. It just was a number that they came up with.
Right. I, I just don't like that we keep doing this.
No, I, I think, there can't be anymore. I mean, I, I don't think that there could be any more billboards anyway for the town. I think those are the only two potential possible spots in the whole town to have them.
We have a third hearing right after this one.
Well, which, which is land that's directly within 10 feet of ours. And, uh, you know, but tho, those are the only spots in the entire town where you could probably, uh, uh, put a billboard like this. I had discussions with the assistant town manager, Steven Sadwick, and he was of that opinion himself. He thought there might be one more location near Raytheon, uh, off of 495, but that was it. That was the only possible place.
Well, we, we hear that a lot and you can't build on that land or that house will never be over here. There'll never be another sign and we know how that goes.
I, I understand that.
You know, the, two years ago, that, that area you're talking about wasn't as clear as it is now. Now it's just all, all open, right?
Yes, the California Paints is, yes.
Yep. Two years ago, you probably wouldn't have even thought of putting us, putting us up.
No, that's true, that's.
Well, things, things change as fast as we can. Like they never will. All right, Brian, do you have anyone on the phone for this one?
Mr. Chairman?
No callers, Mr. Chairman.
None.
Mr. Chairman, if I could be heard?
Oh, I'm sorry, I looked away. Who's that?
My name is Doug Housler. I represent the butter at 146 Daskum, which is gonna be applicant on the very next one. I, I wanted to ask a question. Did the applicant for this, uh, application put in a certified plot plan?
Hold on a second, hold on. Where, where are you?
My, my name's Doug Housler. I'm an attorney in Chelmsford.
Right, who are you representing, though?
Uh, 146, the property owner at 146 Daskum. This is the police property. It's Daskum Road.
It's the next one we're doing, Rob.
Next one you're doing.
I understood, I understood that, but I've got all these numbers except 146. All right, go ahead and, go ahead and ask your question.
Well, the official title of the entity that owns it is Daskum Road Development LLC. So a couple of questions and a couple of comments. First is, um, in the application that was submitted by, by Jamie, it was written that this sign would border 93 to the east and, and that's just not accurate. Uh, my client owns 86 and a half feet between 93 and their property line. So they are much further set back than the, my clients, where my client's gonna be proposing the same type of billboard in, in sense of its use. So they're much further back, which that means in turn is why they're going up to 165 feet. You will be hearing that our client's application is only gonna be at 108 feet. And that's a major difference, or 109 feet, excuse me. Um, so they're up 165 feet because they are so further set back. because they are so further set back from the highway. They need that extra height. That height also doesn't take into account that the fall zone for a billboard, if their, their fall zone would fall onto California Paint building at 165 feet from where they are locating their proposed site. The next piece that's, I think, why this isn't warranted is, um, they, they also, they don't control the buffer area where there are some trees, as I understand it. So their sign is, that's another reason why it's 165 feet high. But they can't control the buffer that my client owns. So they can't cut any trees that are already there or in brush or anything else. And that's gonna probably be what the reason why it is so high. The other piece of this that's a little different is on, um, well, I saw, talked about the fall zone, uh, the height and what's going to be around this property or this billboard is the trees are, are much lower in terms of their height compared to the 165 feet. My client's application, you're gonna hear, is about 109 feet and the trees are about 100 feet. So there's much, much more buffer. So they're going up higher and further away. And I don't believe they demonstrated any type of hardship. The other point I would add is, and that's where I went back earlier, I don't recall being able to see a certified plot plan. Does the board have that?
I'm looking.
Thank you.
Let me look at the packet that was mailed to us. I got so much paper on my table here. Hold on.
I don't see one.
Yeah, a- and, and I'm not doing that just because I want to be technical, but without that plan, I, I can't, I can't imagine any board member can assess how this proposed billboard affects any other property owner. Because we don't have an identified location and it's not certified. So it doesn't even meet the board's criteria for submittal. So respectfully, I, I, I think that they may have done a lot of work, but it's mostly in vain and they certainly haven't demonstrated hardship. And, you know, I, I, it can't even comply with the, the basics of filing a certified plot plan. Um, I don't think we can just rely on, uh, the representations that, you know, well, we think it's this, we think it's that. Uh, that doesn't cut it legally or, or practically. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ray, for the record, I think the attorney that was representing this thing is disconnected right now. I'm sorry, Rob.
You're right, he is. All right, how long has he been gone?
I, I just noticed it.
Just now.
All right, so we'll wait, we'll wait for him to come back.
There's Jamie.
There he is.
Oh, hello?
You, you went away for a minute.
Yeah, that by screen froze, um.
And if I, one more point, I was looking for, the, um, this is, this, the proposed operator of this billboard is not gonna be the property owner. It's a separate entity. My client's application is gonna be.
Uh, Mr. Hessler?
Hous- yes.
You're up, I'm, I'm allowing you to speak right now because we're at the residence portion, the open portion of the meeting.
Yes.
So I really don't want to hear about the next case because that hasn't been opened yet.
And I understand that. I'm just pointing out the differences and trying to point out some of the flaws of what's being submitted with this application.
Right, but I don't, I, I don't want to hear about the differences because I haven't opened yours yet.
Well, they impact each other, sir. I don't know how you could separate the two, but that's fine.
I have to separate the two because yours hasn't been opened yet. You're speaking as a resident.
I'm speaking as in a butter. That's correct.
You're speaking as in a butter.
Right. All, all I'm trying to say is that their application is not going, their board is not gonna be operated by a property owner. It's not benefiting any of the people who are going to be on that property as tenants. It's designed to advertise for n- non-property owners. That's the whole purpose of that billboard. Thank you.
Isn't, isn't that the purpose of all of them?
Not, no, not necessarily. You, in many instances of a property owner has pro, you know, is going to build out, uh, locations for other retail tenants, they're gonna advertise their own tenants as well or substantially. So.
Right, but these are those readable, change every 30 seconds or however often they change signs.
I'm just pointing out that it's not a property owner. That's all I'm trying to get across.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can I respond to a few?
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as, uh, California Paints, uh, is gonna benefit. They want this to go there. I mean, they signed off on it and, uh, they're part of the process. They're gonna, they're gonna get a financial benefit from that. They're well aware of it and we couldn't do it without their authorization and approval. So they're well aware of it and they want to see it succeed. As far as the, our position relative to theirs, theirs is right in the middle of, uh, what we perceive to be wetlands and they haven't gone to conservation yet. So that's a significant flaw in their, uh, program. Our, our plan is a, is a very detailed, specific plan that shows the exact location of where the proposed billboard is. And, um, and it's high because the buffer zone for ours is much greater than the buffer zone for theirs. Their, their proposed, uh, billboard is closer to the residences than ours is. Um, ours is further away and, uh, you know, we discussed that, uh, earlier. I would say that, uh, you know, our buffer zone i- is better. We, the buffer zone is on a number of properties. It's not on LaPolly's properties. LaPolly's property is a, a small little triangular piece right there. It's probably, you know, 400 square feet in total.
That's not, Jamie, that's not accurate.
Well, it's ma, it's a very small piece of property. You know, on the Tuxbury side, it's all in Andover, but, uh, the buffer zone is on those other lots prim, from the Vale Street houses, the heavily wooded lots. So that, that's, that's where that buffer zone is. And, um, so we, we think we have a very good application and our property owner is a, a Tuxbury property. Uh, California Paints, you know, pays substantial property taxes annually to the town of Tuxbury, whereas this property wouldn't pay really any, uh, taxes to the town of Tuxbury. They pay all their taxes to the town of Andover, but we're, uh, substant, you know, California Paint is paying substantial taxes to the town of Tuxbury. So we think our proposal i- is better. We worked with the town to develop, uh, this, uh, bylaw and we think it impacts the houses less than, than theirs would. So we, we think ours is a better proposal for, for the town overall.
Hi, can I say a word, please?
Who wants to speak?
Hi, my name is David Mardaker. I'm a partner in American Outdoor.
Okay, partner.
I, I'd just like to say that we are, we are a license holder in the state of Massachusetts, which is required to be a billboard operator. Uh, Mr. LaPolly, who is our neighbor, I don't believe is. I could be mistaken. Uh, Mr. Hessler may be able to clarify this. But my knowledge is Mr. LaPolly has been, uh, soliciting all of the other billboard companies to partner up with them. And where nobody would because it's very, very unusual when an applicant, a licensed applicant from the state has an application in that, you know, another billboard company would try to jump in. So I, I.
Well, let me, let me, let me interrupt you.
Are you licensed in the state?
Let me answer up here for a second. Let me interrupt you.
Okay, sorry.
Tell me your name again.
My name is David Mardaker.
And your address, because I see Melissa trying to write things down.
Uh, my address is 223 Puritan Road, Swamscott, Mass.
Is that a partner in American Outdoor Advertising?
Okay, so he's a partner with you.
Yes.
The point I was gonna make, the point I want to make here is we're not, we're not gonna debate, same thing I missed, told Mr. Hessler.
I understand that, sir.
Debate who's right or wrong or who should do what.
I, I understand that.
We look at each application individually.
Yes, sir.
And we're not gonna be swayed by, he has a license, you don't have a license. We, we don't care any of that.
I understand.
I let him speak, I let him speak as an abbot. So.
I was just trying to clarify, you know, he made a statement about we, you know, we were going to, um, advertise other people and they were going to advertise. They are actually, in order for them to get a state license, this is my point, they would need to get a company that is licensed in the state that would actually go out and sell it. So basically, they would be the same type of company. That's what I was just trying to point out, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Can I, I ask a question. I never got an answer to my question about whether the, uh, submittal includes a stamped plan.
I do not need a stamp plan.
Well, this is a plan prepared by a land engineering environmental services. I, I think.
Is it certified and stamped by a professional engineer, which is the requirement of the board? It either it is or it isn't.
I believe it. I believe by signing off.
Official stamp on it, Jamie?
I don't think that is a requirement of the board. This is a plan prepared by an engineer.
It requires a certified plot plan. It's not certified.
A, a plot plan is just the location of a building within, within a lot. That's, uh, this is much more substantial than that.
It requires a stamp on it by a professional and that hasn't been done.
It's signed by a professional.
No, it isn't.
Well, I, I mean, we're looking at it. It's, it's.
You can look at it. Jamie, it's very simple. He either, the person that signed it is either a registered land surveyor or a professional engineer. He is. And it says, "P" is stamped.
Engineering Environmental Services, they're professional engineers.
Uh, that's what their title is. I'm asking you, does it bear the stamp?
Gentlemen, can I ask you guys to address your comments to the chair and not towards each other?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe the plan is sufficient to satisfy the requirements of the board. It's a preparan, a plan prepared by an engineer that shows the exact location and it's for the exact purposes of locating the radius of the residence. I think that's what the purpose of the plan is. It's supposed to show the area in detail and it, it does that in a very efficient fashion. And, uh, I think it meets the requirements of the board.
I heard you. I, I heard you. I'm, I'm thinking.
All right.
This is today and age, we have to acknowledge that when we're thinking.
Rob, I have a copy of, um, I'm reading a copy of the checklist for all applications and it says 10 copies of a certified plot plan, not older than six months and certified, not broken. Showing the premises affected must be presented with the application.
Yeah, I kind of, I was kind of leaning towards that myself because we don't have like 50 feet from the buffer zone and, and all that. I, it's a beautiful print.
Yeah.
But I'd, I'd like a little more detail on it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we could submit a certified plan. It would, we can absolutely do that. I mean, this plan does seem to, you know, satisfy it, but we can submit an additional plan if that's a requirement.
Well, it is a requirement.
Thank you.
It is a requirement. I actually keep jumping back to, because as you know, this is, these signs are all new to us. I keep going, I keep going back to 5290 is what I'm reading.
Yes, yes.
If, if you. Well, let me, let me show you what I'm reading. Figured out how to use my computer. That's what I was reading. Let's see what comes up. Hopefully it's good. All right. So if you read this, right?
I, I can't see it.
No, it's common.
Yeah, I, I see it, yeah.
All right, I'm, I'm sure both of you have read this 100 times.
Yeah.
So y'all looking for, all right, 5291, 5291 is the, is the locations, 1,000 feet. But then it goes on to the special permit. All right, which you have to go to the selectmen for.
Yes.
The application fee, obviously.
Yeah.
And it says, "Site plan and area maps identifying the following features." Location of existing buildings, parking spaces and traffic circulation. All of this stuff.
Tho- those would be for the selectmen, wouldn't they? For the selectmen application?
I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with you. Did we lose anyone? Someone speak up if we lost someone. If you're not here, say aye. So I, I kind of agree with you that, because again, this is new to us. What we're.
Right, I, I think all those, I think all those requirements are for the selectmen's application.
You're actually gonna like what I have to say.
Okay.
I think this thousand foot of residential or multifamily district use is what we're talking about right now, right? That's where we are.
Yes.
Edge of the sign, edge of the sign shall be located closer than 25 feet or within 1,000. Let me read that again. So you can't be closer than 25 feet to the highway.
Yes.
Within 1,000 feet of a residential or multifamily district use. So that's what we're looking at, right? So you've, you've gone to conservation. You've got conservation to adjust the location of the sign a little bit. Now you know that you're within 1,000 feet of a residential area. I know you're within 1,000 feet.
I lost you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. I lost you.
Can't hear you.
Can you guys hear us?
I can hear you. Oh, yeah.
There you are, you're coming back now.
Thank you.
Was there something you had to say?
I, I didn't hear your last couple of statements after you read the 1,000 feet from the residential multifamily.
So that's what you're here. That's why you're here.
Yes, correct.
And I completely agree with you that the special permit comes from the selectmen.
Yes.
When you go to the selectmen, you have to have the site plan, the area maps, identify the following, all of these other criterias.
Yes, that's the way we read it.
Right? I can agree with you that you're within 1,000 feet.
Yes.
I can agree with that.
Yes.
And what I would like to see is a distance. I would like to see how far away you are. I know what you're telling me.
Yeah, exact distance.
I'd like to see some exact distance. I'd like to see some numbers on that.
Okay.
Do I think that needs to be a certified plan? Honestly, I don't. I don't think it needs to be for us because when you get a special permit from us, we're gonna. when you get a special permit from us, we're going to, excuse me, when you get a variance from us, we're going to approve or deny on exactly what's on that print. And it's the building commissioner's job to stick to that mark. Follow what I'm saying?
Yes, I do, yes.
You're off the mark.
We can get an updated certified plan that shows the exact distances to the residence.
I would really like to see exact distances. And if you're going to go through that trouble.
I'm lost again, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Is it me, or is it, is it him?
I think it's his connection.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, because I actually hooked up a cord. I would like to see, if you're going to go through the trouble of giving me exact distances, I would like to see. All right, he's back. Can you hear me?
Jamie?
Tell me when you're back. We can't, we can't hear you. You know, I wonder if I get this off, maybe it'll help. That help? Nope.
Nope.
We can't hear you, James. You're actually on mute. No, you're on frozen. No, you're gone. All right, so we're going to wait for him to come back.
Hello?
Yep, you're back.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay. So the last I heard was, we, we would like a plan showing the exact distances from the residence.
I'd like to see distances, and if you're going to go through that trouble, certify it.
Yep, we certainly can do that.
So that's, that's my take on it. It, I mean, we, we have to put that to a vote. But that's you know, I'm, I'm looking at continuing you and, and getting a better looking print.
To the next, when would the next meeting be?
I think we're back on schedule now, we're just going to do it like this until we can meet again.
Okay, that'd be fine. We can do that for the next meeting.
When is our next meeting?
May 28th.
May 28th. Board members, any, any thoughts on this?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, we'll continue it.
Good.
So.
Bless you.
It's allergies, it's allergies. Don't worry.
Would it be possible to get, possible to get the orientation of the sign as well?
Orientation of the sign, no. You'd almost like to see. I know it's a lot and I know it's, it's, it's not ideal for everyone. But like actually what you're supposed to bring to the selectmen might not be for us.
We, we would, we would, like you, as you said, Mr. Chairman, it's a new process. So we would, we'll, we'll get the exact distances and orientation, a certified plan, and a, and a visual representation of it.
Like I always said, more information is better.
Yes.
Give us the choice to look at it or not look at it.
We, we will do that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
All right.
It sounds, it sounds like we're all kind of in agreement to, maybe something to make a motion to continue to a May 28th meeting.
I'm going to make the motion, I'm just looking for the paperwork so I can say the right applicant. Like to make a motion to continue to the May 28th meeting. The application for American Outdoor Advertising Company, Mass. LLC, on behalf of P8, P slash eight Oliver, 150 Daskum LLC, care of AEW Capital Management.
Did you say 150 Daskum Road?
Sorry, I'll finish it off. For a variance from section 5291 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaws to install an electronic message sign slash billboard as shown on the plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 150 Daskum Road, assessors map 113 Lot 26, zoned heavy industrial.
Okay. Motion has been made by Ray.
Second.
Second by Nancy. Ray, all in favor? And I'll do a roll call. Ray?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Chair is aye, unanimous.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, would anybody like to do a few minute recess?
Yes, please.
Good, me too. Somebody make a motion to take a, no, let's do 15 minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to take a 15 minute break.
Motion's made. Someone second it, anyone?
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're going to take a 15 minute recess. Maybe just, I don't know what Brian wants to do, but maybe just mute and shut your video off.
Uh, that's what I recommend, I would not recommend anybody sign off.
Okay. Why can't I get those little icons back up, Brian?
Um, if you put your cursor down towards the bottom of the screen, hope you'll be able to.
Yep, nope. I think I got too many people on my screen. And let me, let me change my view.
Yeah, we can help.
There we go, I got it. I wasn't even, I wasn't even on full screen. All right, so there goes my video. And we're in recess. I'll be back around eight. So it looks like we're just waiting for Melissa to come back. Another minute.
Okay, looks like we're all here. Anybody not here? No? Alright, so we're all back. Melissa's here, Ray's here, Nancy's here, Dan's here. I am here as the chair. Alright, next one, Melissa, please.
Lupoli Companies on behalf of Daskum Road Development LLC for variance from section 5291 of the Tuxbury zoning bylaws to construct an electronic message center sign billboard located adjacent to Interstate 93 as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 146 Daskum Road, Andover Assessors Map 113, Lot 24, Zoned Heavy Industrial.
Alright, thank you. I think the, um, voting members on this. Have a preference? Unmute yourself, Dan and Ray.
I think the three of you should, uh, should be the voters on this one.
Okay, you good with that, Ray?
Yeah, fine.
Alright, here we go. Alright, name and address for the record, please, gentlemen.
Hi, uh, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me? Okay?
Yep, hey, you're fine.
Okay, great. Uh, my name's Peter Ellison. I'm a civil engineer with TEC. Uh, and I'm here tonight. You already met Doug Hausler, uh, the project attorney. And also from TEC on the call, uh, although his, his camera's off is Rick Freiberg of TEC.
Hello, everybody.
Alright, if you guys would again individually state your name and address, please. We have to have that for the record.
Certainly. Douglas Hausler, Lampert Hausler and Rodman, 10 North Road, Shamsford, Massachusetts.
Peter Ellison, TEC. 146 Daskum Road, Andover, Massachusetts.
And Rick Freiberg, also from TEC, also 146 Daskum Road, Andover, Massachusetts.
Alright, thank you. Alright, tell us a little bit about what you're doing.
Okay, great. Um, I do have a presentation prepared, so I'm gonna try and share a PowerPoint presentation. Um, let me know if you can see that.
I can see it.
Yeah, I got it.
I've got it.
I can see it.
Alright. So again, uh, I'm a civil engineer with TEC and, um, we're here tonight representing the owner and the applicant, uh, is Lupoli Companies. And, uh, Doug Hausler is the project attorney as well on the call. To give you a, an overview of the presentation, first I'll talk about the project location and the project purpose. And then I'll go through the application for the variance. I'll talk about the proximity to, uh, the residential parcels, um, in relation to the project. And then I'll go over the hardships, um, that qualify us for variance. Um, talk about the intent of the zoning bylaw and then provide a conclusion. So the project location, uh, is at 146 Daskum Road. Um, it's on the far east end of Tuxbury directly abutting the I-93 corridor. And again, the owner applicant is, uh, Lupoli Companies. Um, this, this, uh, figure here kinda shows the outline of the parcel at 146 Daskum Road. Um, the parcel is split between Andover and Tuxbury with a majority of the parcel in the town of Andover. Uh, sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-one square feet of the parcel is in Tuxbury. Uh, and that portion of the parcel is the very far southern end of, uh, of the blue, blue shaded area in this graphic. Uh, the zoning district is heavy industrial, um, and also it is within the wireless communications overlay district. Uh, it directly abuts Interstate 93 and the access to the site is via Daskum Road and Smith Drive in the town of Andover. The project purpose is to construct a digital billboard at one hundred and nine feet in height. Um, the purpose is to advertise for tenants at the Daskum Road project. Um, this is kind of a strength of the application. Um, the board may be aware, but, uh, Lupoli Companies was within the town of Andover for about six hundred, a little over six hundred thousand square feet of commercial space, retail, restaurants. Um, all different kinds of tenants, like potentially, you know, between fifteen and twenty tenants at this development that would be able to utilize the billboard, uh, for their onsite businesses at 146 Daskum Road. Um, the purpose is also, uh, to provide public service announcements, um, for the town of Tuxbury and for the state of Massachusetts. Uh, we are designing this, this billboard to conform with the Tuxbury zoning bylaw with the one exception that I'll get into later. Uh, and we're trying to minimize the impact to the nearby residential uses by lowering the sign as low as we possibly can um, to try and nestle it in, in with the, the trees of the area, um, the mature trees and try to screen it as much as possible from the nearby residential use. So we're in front of you requesting, uh, relief from section 5291 of the Tuxbury zoning bylaw. That section is related to the location of these billboards. States that off-premise signs shall be permitted in the heavy industrial and office research zoning districts located adjacent to Interstate 93 or Interstate 495. No premise sign edge shall be located closer than twenty-five feet from interstate highway right-of-way or within a thousand feet of a residential or multifamily district to use. So we meet, uh, all of this section except for the end there where, where it requires a thousand feet of, uh, separation from a residential or multifamily district or use. And now I can get into some of the measurements, uh, being where the billboard is located and some of the residences nearby. Um, are you all able to see my mouse cursor?
Yes.
Okay, so this, this, uh, red triangle here is the location of the proposed billboard, uh, on an aerial. And the closest, uh, residential use within the town of Tuxbury is shown here. It's off of Vale Street. It's six hundred and fifty feet from the edge of the proposed billboard. Now, this region, uh, between the house and I-93 is about a hundred-foot wide buffer of mature trees, so there's a pretty good screening there. Also, I-93 is serving as a buffer. It's about twenty-five feet higher than the elevation of that residence. So the side slope up to the side of 93 is serving as a buffer and, and really blocking the view, uh, the potential view of where the billboard would be. Um, other residential uses in Tuxbury, on the same side of 93, the closest resident on Vale Street is eight hundred and twenty feet from the proposed billboard location. Um, in this area, there's about an eight-hundred-foot buffer of mature trees, uh, shown here. And then these are the MBTA, MBTA tracks, uh, between the residential use and the sign. Uh, there's also, uh, residences within Andover that are within a thousand feet. Uh, this is a cop, this is called Copley Drive. It's a cul-de-sac within the town of Andover. This, uh, the closest house here is about, is, uh, six hundred and twenty feet from the edge of the sign. Um, but you can see here, there's, uh, about a three-hundred-foot wide buffer of mature trees between this house and the sign. And that land is actually owned by the, uh, Town of Andover Conservation Commission. So that's conservation restriction. That land will never be developed. Those trees would permanently be there to, uh, serve as a buffer. And again, we have ninety-three between the houses and the sign that's, that also serves as a buffer. Uh, this is the closest proximity to a residential district. Um, so just south of the MBTA tracks, this is all zoned residential here. It's about a hundred and sixty-five feet to the edge of that MBTA property from the billboard. Um, now, th- these properties here, this, this land is encumbered by wetlands. And I actually inserted a, uh, a, a map of that area in the bottom right that shows, um, a stream that runs through there as well as two large wetlands on the left and, and at the top there by the MBTA tracks. And those wetlands are, are the reason why this, this residential, this paper street, um, that's been zoned residential has not been constructed to date. It's just financially, it's not, uh, feasible to build those houses in there. So I'd like to talk about some of the hardships that qualify us, uh, for a variance. Um, the site-specific conditions, specifically the irregular lot shape that we have. Um, so in this, in this image here, the, uh, north is to the right of the page. Daskum Road is here and I-93 is, uh, running along the bottom of the page here. Now, this portion to the north of the site within the town of Andover is, uh, is like a square shape, so that's, that's somewhat normal. But where it becomes irregular is this finger of land that extends down to the south here. This portion of the land here is, um, what's within the, the town of Tuxbury. I can go to the next page here. So this red line that cut across is the town line between Andover and Tuxbury. The blue parcel is sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-one square feet. It's about a hundred and twenty-five feet wide, meaning, uh, if you offset the right-of-way of the highway, a hundred and twenty-five feet, that's, that's the width of the parcel. Um, the, the billboard is located in a spot where as, it's as far north as it possibly could go within the town of Tuxbury. Now, because of the irregular shape of the lot, this portion down here is the only portion where we could propose a billboard. The use is not allowed within the town of Andover. The, the layout of the billboard, which you'll see on the plot plan, is already pushed as far north as we could possibly get it. Um, and, I mean, realistically, if you think about the, the creation of this lot, the purpose of this finger, the reason that this finger was created was, um, to be able to put a billboard in along the edge of the highway. It was always thought about as, um, a foreseeable use along this stretch of land here. Now, this, this parcel is also within the, uh, wireless communications overlay district. So I think, again, it's just a, a point to make that this area was always thought about as potentially to have a, a tall structure located there. Um, not quite a billboard. This area is zoned for heavy industrial, so a billboard does, is allowed use. However, um, the town did, did zone this for, uh, wireless communications overlay. Now, I'll talk about some of the benefits. Um, the, the relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. That's as it's written in the Mass General Law. So the property directly abuts I-93. There are no other private properties between this property at 146 Daskum Road and I-93. And because we're close to I-93, we can provide a lower sign height and make the sign less visible to abutters. What we're trying to do is provide a sign that is nestled into the existing trees out there. Block it from view from the residential uses which are over six hundred feet away. Um, you know, six hundred and fifty feet away across the highway, eight hundred and twenty feet away on the same side of the highway. Um, which I think is, is really the intent of the bylaw, which I'll get into later. Some other benefits are tax revenues. This parcel within the town of Tuxbury is essentially worthless right now. It's just wooded, undeveloped. Um, with a billboard, it would raise taxes for, for the town of Tuxbury. Uh, the, the board could be used for, uh, would be used for public service announcements. Um, and again, billboards are a common use along the interstate highway system in Massachusetts. I put together some graphics to kinda give you an idea of the viewing corridors that we foresee. Um, so billboards are legible from about, from twenty-five hundred feet away to about five hundred feet. If you're further than twenty-five hundred feet, it's gonna be too far away. You won't be able to read any of the lettering. So that's really the, the stretch of highway that we're trying to advertise to. Um, and what we've shown here is, uh, at five hundred feet away, there's about a fifteen-hundred linear feet stretch along I-93 self-bound where you would be able to see the sign. Um, and at seventy-five miles per hour, that would be about fourteen seconds of viewing time. And on the northbound approach, again, about five hundred feet away, we have a twelve-hundred linear foot, uh, viewing corridor here. And that would provide eleven seconds of viewing time. So one of the strengths of our application is the billboard height that we're proposing. Um, our intent was to design the height and the billboard to be as low as possible and nestle it into the trees. The proposed height is a hundred and nine feet. Um, the bottom of sign is, is just above the top of the tree line, um, to try and nestle it into that, that existing vegetation. The way that these billboards and the agreements work is typically the owner will enter into an agreement with Mass DOT because these are typically, um, located along interstate highways that are regulated by Mass DOT. And it would provide the opportunity to enter into an agreement with, uh, for selective trimming of trees, um, to create the, the viewing corridor that you need. Um, and by, by providing the lower sign and, and selectively trimming trees and what I've done here is located areas in green along, um, the property between Mass DOT and, and Lupoli Companies property that would be selectively trimmed in order to create the viewing corridor, both on the northbound and southbound approaches. And I think it's a key point is, one of the reasons we're able to provide a lower sign at a hundred and nine feet is because there is no private property between 146 Daskum Road and the right-of-way. So we have the right to selectively trim the trees on 146 Daskum Road and then by entering into an agreement with, with Mass DOT, we'd be able to selectively trim it in the, in the right-of-way as well. So to speak to the intent of the, the zoning bylaw, it, it does not derogate from the intent. I think the intent is to promote billboards along the interstate highways of I-93 and 495, which is directly referenced in section 5291, which we are seeking relief from. Um, the bylaw intends to create the maximum possible buffer between the billboard and the residential uses, um, which we're, we're, we're doing that by providing a, a sign height of a hundred and nine feet and nestling it into those mature trees. And all around the edges of where we're proposing the sign are, are swaths of mature trees and forests that will serve to buffer and screen the sign from the residential uses. So in conclusion, um, the proposal in front of you is to construct a digital billboard at a hundred and nine feet in height. Um, it'll provide advertisement for onsite tenants at 146 Daskum Road. We're requesting relief from section 5291 of the bylaw. The hardship that we're, uh, taking advantage of or, or using is because of the irregular shape of the lot, that finger, uh, that extends to the south. Really, the only foreseeable use in that area is a billboard. Um, the property directly abuts I-93, allowing for a lower sign height and meets the intent of the bylaw. And this last slide here is just a, uh, image of the certified plot plan that was submitted as part of the proposal or the application. Um, and with that, I would turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, be happy to answer any questions.
Alright, could you go back to your, um, your, your screen of, of butters that would be within the thousand-foot zone?
Yes, sir.
Show me the Tuxbury ones.
Okay, so the closest property in Tuxbury is across 93. Um, it's off of Vale Street. It's shown here.
The address is Vale Street?
Uh, I do not know the exact address off the top of my head. I could look it up.
But it, it's Vale Street.
Yeah, that's how it's listed on Google Maps. Yeah.
Okay. On your abutters list, your last page of your packet?
Yep.
There isn't anything on Vale Street?
Yeah, the, the reason for that is, um, because these properties are all well over three hundred feet, which is the, um, requirement for, for a butter notification.
So that person that we're talking about right now, who's eight hundred and fifty feet away from that sign?
Uh, six, six fifty, sorry.
Six fifty?
Yep.
That person was not notified of the sign?
It was not notified because, that's correct, sir.
So it's, it's the typical abutters and the abutters, abutters, and that's it? Cause you have, what, six people on your abutters list? Seven people?
Yep, that's correct.
The MBTA being one of them?
Mm-hmm.
Are those even MBTA tracks?
Uh, the, these are MBTA tracks that run, uh, east-west across the page here.
Okay.
Yep.
See now, I, I have a problem with that. Because here we are talking about these people that are going to be affected by these signs, and you keep talking about the mature growth of the trees. But in the same conversation, you can do select trimming with DOT. So these trees that we're talking about that are mature and blocking their view can be selectively trimmed by DOT to see the sign.
Yeah, and I think the, the location of those trees is important because the trees that we would be trimming are kind of over in this portion of the right-of-way within DOT.
Right.
But the, the mature trees that buffer this property are on this side of ninety-three over here. And it's about a hundred, a hundred feet wide.
Right.
Yep. But yeah, I, I understand your point that you're saying, you know, they weren't notified because it's not required, but yeah.
And then you have, you have Andover where the use isn't even permitted. So you don't have to go to Andover at all. Because they don't have any regulations on this, correct?
Uh, they, they don't allow the use of a billboard within the town of Andover. And because all of the work is proposed within Tuxbury, we would not need any approvals from, from the town of Andover.
Right, and your, your Andover properties were even closer, correct?
Yeah, six hundred and twenty feet. These, these are, these properties along Copley Drive are closer. However, there's, there's a, a larger swath and, and buffer that is conservation.
I, I understand all that. My, my point is that, like, Andover is not going to be notified at all because it's a use not permitted, so you don't have to go to Andover at all. And then the people in Tuxbury, they're not notified about this at all. So they have, because essentially, I mean, you're putting up a hundred and nine-foot sign. That turns that six hundred and fifty-foot person into an abutter now.
Yeah, I, I could, I understand your point, and my only response to that is that we're, we're just following the requirements of a butter notification that, that's given to us by the town.
I understand. I think that's something we need to change. Because like I said, this is, you would be number three that we've heard for these readable signs. So that's something, and I want to say the first one, the, the only resident that was abutting was in Andover. And I, not a budding, excuse me, the only resident that was in the thousand-foot, now this was a couple of months ago. I want to say that they were notified, almost as a courtesy, they were notified. And that's something, that's something we need to look into on our end.
Yeah, they did. They did notify that individual and they did bring it up. Yes, I do remember that.
They had to do something with the town of Andover.
They did go to their board meeting.
The attorney that was there had stated that they needed to bring it to the, to the town of Andover.
Yeah, I guess our, our intent is, you know, if, if we're required to go to the town of Andover, that's what we'll do.
Right, but again, that, that's Andover, I mean, where Tuxbury.
Yep.
And I just, I just don't, I, I think that was maybe an oversight. You know, maybe when they were thinking about this, they didn't think that every sign would be less than a thousand feet away. I mean, to get you a thousand feet, you can't see my cursor, you can't see where I'm pointing either. To get you a thousand feet away, you'd have to be out on that street or that parking lot, whatever the paved area is behind you there.
Yeah.
Your sign. If you went over the other way, go, go back to your property where the sign is.
Yep.
Go back to that paved area to the left. You'd have to be up in there to get a thousand feet. And that's not your property, correct?
That's not our property.
You know, you just have this little finger here.
Yeah, and that, that's the hardship that we have is we couldn't possibly provide a billboard that's a thousand feet away if that's within the, the parcel where we're allowed to build it.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may suggest that the notifications are entirely appropriate under both chapter forty A as well as under your own bylaws, so.
I understand that. My point is I don't like it. I, I understand you did what you were supposed to do, but I don't like it. That's, that's the point I'm making. And I mean, you're, all your abutters are commercial businesses. Every butter on your abutter list is probably zoned heavy industrial.
Yeah, we, we, we notified the, the residential districts that are south of the MBTA tracks within three hundred feet. Another point that you brought up, Mr. Chairman, was that, you know, it would be, it's really difficult to get a sign that's a thousand feet away from residential use.
Right.
So when we first started looking at this a few months ago, we looked at properties up and down ninety-three and tried to pinpoint locations, and we couldn't find a single location that's a thousand feet from residential use, or use or district.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Couldn't build it where the mall was going?
I'm not sure where that is.
Out the end of Jenny's Way, that big parcel of land. Jenny's Way, Crock Mill Farm, that area. Go ahead, Ray.
Yeah, did you say you notified the residential districts, districts within three hundred feet?
Yes, sir.
What residences are those?
It's, it's just the paper street that is south of the MBTA tracks. So it's, all these parcels, there's probably, I don't know, seven or eight of them in here are all under the same ownership. It was a paper street that was created many years ago and has never been constructed.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
What are the addresses on those? What's the paper street?
Um, I have the application here. I can grab it. It's the, the owner's name is Yvonne Cormier at All Trust.
Yeah.
Uh, that's why you see his name four times on there, or her name. I don't know.
So that paper street is crush on, or is that their address where they live?
That's where they live.
Yeah, that's their address. Yeah, where they live.
Anything else, Ray? I kind of jumped on top of you there.
No, that's fine. What properties would be the billboard for? Can you show me on the map?
Uh, you want to see on the map what, which properties the billboard would be for?
Yeah, who, who, who would be the advertisers on this?
So the, probably this site plan is the best. So Lupoli Companies owns this lot that's shaded in blue here. Now, the, the proposed billboard is way down at the south end of this lot here, but the larger blue lot is where Lupoli Companies has an approved site development within the town of Andover. So he doesn't have, he doesn't have tenants signed yet. He has an approved project with the planning board and the town, but he has not started construction nor signed any leases. So the, the tenants of those buildings have not been identified yet.
Yeah, I just have a, I, I have a concern with granting a variance for a device that is not going to be a benefit to the people of the town of Tuxbury.
Yeah, and I can, one of the things I would say about that is the state law, the, the outdoor advertising board, they have regulations that are built into what's required in order to provide a, a digital billboard. And one of them is to provide public service announcement time. So there would be a portion of the advertising time that would be allocated to the town of Tuxbury to be able to advertise in-town events. Like if, if you had a town meeting coming up, you could, you could put a, a, an ad in on the digital billboard to notify everyone that drives by on ninety-three.
And another benefit for the town of Tuxbury would be the tax revenue generated because the improvement would be made on the Tuxbury side. So the tax revenue that was discussed earlier tonight, there would be a similar tax benefit to the town.
Yeah, I'm just weighing that against the impact to the, to the people that would have to see the billboard.
Well, under this application, it's, because it's so much lower, it would appear that the buffer areas that are already in existence substantially minimize any possible view by anybody, as demonstrated in all these various slides that Peter has presented to us tonight. So really, no detriment to.
You're trying to tell us that a hundred and nine-foot sign is not going to be visible to anyone except the cars going by?
Given the buffer, it's going to be, it's going to be a lot less than the other one. And more importantly, it's going to be at about the equal height of the existing trees. If Peter could bring that up, I'm, I don't want that to be lost. That's an important piece here.
Well, it's just as important to note, there is no other one at this point, so.
I, I agree with you, but you're, you're not going to approve too.
But I thought the sign was just under the tree line. At the bottom of the sign was just.
Yep, just the, the bottom of the proposed sign is just above the top of the trees. So it's as low as we can go without clearing those trees.
Right, so it would be the same height of trees across the road that they'll still be able to see, I'm assuming.
Yeah, but because of the topography difference, because, you know, ninety-three is higher than the residences across the highway. And in relation to when you're standing on Vale Street, looking across the street, those trees are so much higher than your, where your viewing angle is. If you tried to look up above those trees, you'd be looking right into the sky. You wouldn't be able to see the billboard at all.
So from the street viewpoint, it's, it's pretty much blocked.
We, we took the approach to try and provide a sign that's viewable from the highway that is as low as you could possibly be. And that's why we're, we're saying, you know, we would need to enter an agreement with DOT to do selective trimming along the highway. The, the lower sign and the trimming, we think is a good option because it, it is screened by the, the trees that surround it, you know, to the south and west.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Ryan, are there any callers on the phone?
No callers, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are you still here?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, Dan? You're awful quiet.
I, I, I don't know, like, I keep hearing these words, tree trimming and tree, the trees are going to block the view, but we're going to cut all these trees down for fifteen hundred feet. So I, it's very hard to determine if it's going to affect residents or not, both, in both cases.
And I get what he's saying. Saying that the residents won't be able to see it. And they're going to see it. It's a, it's a big lit-up readable sign.
Yeah, we see them all over the place. I mean, they're visible forever and they're, they're, they're bright. And it's, I believe they're all LED lights.
Oh, yeah, they're bright, right. But what he is saying is, it butters on the northbound side of the highway. Those houses are significantly lower than the highway. Twenty-five feet is what he states. So you got the twenty-five feet, then you got the trees. And I get what he's saying. You're going to have to look up at the sky to see them, but.
Right.
How big is the sign? I know it's a hundred and nine feet, but how, how big is it?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's fourteen feet tall and forty-eight feet wide, which is the requirement in the Tuxbury bylaw.
We, we, we keep talking about the trees being the buffer and the trees are going to save us here in this situation. But what we keep forgetting is we live in New England. There are only leaves on the trees from like, you know, the end of spring until fall. So what happens from fall into spring is, is they're going to be this LED light shining and, you know, the several residences home that it's within the one thousand feet.
No, I think the, the Tuxbury bylaw has specific regulations on what's allowed for, for lighting. So we, we would be, you know, be required to meet all of those. And again, I mean, the, the other option would be, you know, don't clear trees, but provide a taller sign. And our approach was to avoid that, to try and provide the sign as low as possible, to use the trees as much as we could as, as screening.
I think most of those trees are evergreens too, so those don't really lose leaves, if I remember correctly.
I, I actually started looking, am I on mute? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
I started looking, because you mentioned that Tuxbury has requirements for lighting. And they do, but that's more of like a parking lot light splashing into the neighbor's yard. And you're not going to have that at six hundred and fifty feet away.
Yeah, I, I.
Is that what you're referring to?
No, I believe that there's specific lighting requirements in the bylaw for, specific to billboards.
Really? You're thinking of the?
If, if not, then I'm confusing it and it's in the state bylaw. It's in the state regs. It's, it's in either Tuxbury or the state. I, I'm taking a look right now in the Tuxbury bylaw.
Mr. Ellison, you're sharing your screen, so the window you have up is just a gray box.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So I'm, I'm just scrolling through the town of Tuxbury zoning bylaw.
Yeah, me too. Where are you? Fifty-two eighty?
It's fifty-two, fifty-two ninety-four subsection B talks about not having excessive lighting and having automatic level controls to reduce light levels at night. So we'd have to comply with that section of the bylaw.
And this, this section also talks about, you know, no sounds. The, the pictures that are shown have to be still and have to, can't move for less, for more than ten, ten seconds. It has to stay as a still shot before it changes.
It also states that it will blend with the natural surroundings.
How is that even possible?
What it says.
We'll paint the pole green.
What is a tribe vision billboard? Is that three signs in one?
I'm not sure what that is, Mr. Chairman, but I, the billboard that would be proposed is, uh, it's called V-shaped. So there would be one sign facing north and one sign facing south, offset slightly at an angle.
So it's not, it's not one double-sided sign. It's a sign and then another sign angled?
Yeah, if I, if I share with you the last slide, it actually shows the, it shows the billboard itself. So you can see here the, the kind of V shape that I'm talking about?
Yeah.
And it's on, you know, a metal frame type system attached to the monopole. And there would be one sign, digital sign facing north, and then the other sign slightly offset at an angle facing south.
Those signs are static, right? They're not on any type of moving thing? You can't spin them, turn them, twist them?
Nope, they're all static.
Hmm, there's one that piqued my curiosity. All right, hold on. We should just turn that. Hold on. That's not what I want to do.
Did you want to share your screen, Rob?
Yeah, I want to share my screen. I know, I know how to do it.
No, no, he's got to stop sharing for you to share.
I just, I just stopped sharing on my end.
Jay. Jay on this page. How is that even possible?
Not. It's not.
Yeah, I think it's, um-
Where the thousand dollar limit, uh, limit comes, comes to. If you're a thousand feet, probably you can meet that requirement.
Yeah, that would be like, um, you know, when we designed parking lots and we designed the, the site lighting, we have the same requirement. There can't be any spillover to a budding private property owners. Um, so you can, you can perform like a foot candle, um, lighting analysis basically. But these signs are, the, the bulbs that are used in them are going to be, you know, regulated at the state level that this light would never be able to shine a thousand feet. It would be far less than that.
Right, but you get properties, the, the paper street, even though it's a paper street, it's still a residential, residential street. That's what, at the base of the sign.
Yeah, the, uh, the residential paper street is, uh, those properties are 165 feet south of the sign, sign face. Um, but again, to, to speak to that, um, the, those properties have, haven't been developed to date and are encumbered by, uh, several different wetlands that would make it, um, nearly impossible to construct anything there. Also, just to, um, one more point on the, the lighting and the, the level of lighting. Think there's a difference between being, you know, being visible from a thousand feet away and, you know, shining light and glaring light is that, those are diff, you know, two different things. The light would not be illuminating more than, I don't know, say 50 feet. That doesn't mean that it's not visible from a thousand feet or, or 1,200 feet where we have it.
How close are you to 93?
Our property directly abuts, uh, right away. The sign is 130 feet from the edge of 93, from the pavement.
130 feet?
Yes, horizontally. There's about a 30-foot grade difference. The, the base of the sign is lower than 93, which is the reason for why the sign needs to be 109 feet tall.
That's going to put you 80 feet above the highway?
That's correct.
Or you go to the metal top?
Just, just above the top of the trees. Yeah.
The trees that you're going to have DOT selectively trim?
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be trimming the trees that are very close in proximity to the sign itself. It's more further out along the viewing corridors that we would want to try to trim those, selectively trim those.
You're going to trim the trees that are blocking the sign from the cars?
From the highway. Right.
You're not going to put up a sign that you can't see. I get it.
That's, that's another place where I'm trying to wrap my head around. If you're putting the base of the sign at the top of the trees, and you mean your, your view after so many feet, it's going to cut the sign off, isn't it?
Yeah, and, uh, we put together, we've done an analysis of, um, and I can share my screen again to show you this slide. So we, we took a look at the, the viewing corridors along the southbound and the northbound corridors. And basically this blue area is where we expect from the highway, you'd be able to see the sign. And in green here, along the southbound, this would be the area where you'd be looking to selectively trim the trees. The, the reason we're able to do that is because our property directly abuts 93.
So is it selectively trimmed? Or are you going to remove all those trees in green so that it can be viewed from the highway?
No, so that's, that's an important distinction, right? Because when you say remove the trees, that would be cutting them at the base of the tree. What we're proposing to do is, is only trim exactly what's required to be just below the sign so that it's viewable. So if the trees, you know, we're talking about taking, just taking the very top of these trees along this area.
The trees, they're not on your property. They would be up to the compartment of transportation to trim and/or remove though, right?
That's correct.
All right. Brian, any calls yet?
No callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Does anybody here want to speak about this? Because I can open it to the public. I guess we'll just wait for callers perhaps. All right. Now I got the whole screen again. All right. Uh, who was voting on this? Ray? Ray, anything else?
No.
Nancy?
No.
Dan?
No, sir.
All right. All right. I'm going to ask James directly because he was having video trouble. I noticed that he's back. Would you like me to open it to the public so you can speak? You got to unmute, unmute your mic.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, me, uh-
I can hear you. James, can you hear us?
Yes, Cutlass? Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
I, I asked you if you wanted me to open it to the public so you could speak. I didn't hear your answer.
Oh, yeah, sure. I'd like to have a couple of comments.
All right, so-
Mr. Chairman.
Who's talking to me now? All right, public, being a public hearing, we'll open it to the public this time, at this time. If there's anyone who would like to speak, name an address for the record, please.
Uh, Jamie Cutlass, uh, 84 Quail Run, Tewksbury, but technically I'm not a direct abutter.
Well, you're, you're here and you want to speak on it. Um, like before, I'm not going to entertain an argument about whose sign is better. If, if you'd like to speak, um, representing me abutter?
Yes, I, I would, I mean, our view is that their sign is directly in the wetlands. I don't, um, they haven't gone to conservation. We were instructed to go to conservation first. Uh, secondly, it seems like the lower sign would be a lot more visible to the houses, a lot closer. And once they trim the trees, there'll be direct sightlines from the houses to the trees. Uh, all those houses on the other side of 93, they're going to trim all the trees in between the sign and 93, and it's going to make it much more visible to the homeowners, uh, on Vale Street across 93, as well as the Andover residents. Uh, so I think, I think that's problematic. And there's no representation from DOT as to what they're going to do or how they're going to do it, or if they're ever going to trim any trees. We don't know that. That's completely unknown. Um, and I don't believe they had exact dimensions to all the residents either, but they did have, you know, theirs were similar to ours. Um, but those would be my points, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would, um, would you gentlemen like to respond to any of that? You don't have to. I'm just giving-
No, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to, uh, respond. First point, um, related to conservation, um, to us, it, it just made sense to go to your board first. Without a variance approved for this, we have no location on our property where we could put this board. So there was no reason to go to conservation without a variance in hand. Um, and, and our intent is to file with conservation. Once we do, if, if we are lucky to secure a variance tonight. Um, to the second point, a, a lower sign being more visible, um, I just, I disagree with that point. I think a higher sign is more visible. Um, you could see it above more trees. The higher it is, the more you could see it. That's just generally how I, uh, how we came up with our approach to try and provide the lowest sign possible, um, with selective trimming of trees.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else, board members?
I got nothing.
Nothing for me.
Nothing? Dan? Ray?
Nothing.
All right. Shall we put it to a vote? Is that the flavor of the board?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Okay. All right. Um, let you guys go. Anything else?
Uh, yes. Uh, I'm sorry. Uh, David Marter again. I'd like to just say one thing.
Oh, yeah, on the phone. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, this is Dave Marter again. Am I, am I the one that's, uh, speaking?
You are.
Okay. Um, I just, I just wanted to-
Hold, hold on a second. What's your name? Dave?
David Marter.
Didn't we have Rick on the phone?
No, my, David Marter, I'm sorry.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, I'd just like to bring up a point. Uh, the gentleman just made that he wanted to come to zoning board of appeals before he went to conservation. What we were told, the main, the main point of going to the conservation is if you don't, if you go to the conservation and they move the board, or they want you to move it, like they asked us to move ours, then this hearing would be moved because they'd have to come back with the new location of the sign.
Yes, I agree with you.
I think that they should have to have gone to conservation. And if that is the case, then there really can't be a ruling tonight until they go to conservation and they agree and approve the placement of their sign.
I agree. I agree to disagree with you. First of all, we had Rick on the phone. I'm not crazy. You're actually on the phone from the case before.
Yes, yes.
What, what we can vote on tonight is exactly the application that they gave us.
Okay.
If conservation decides to move that, if they say it's in a wetlands and they want them to move it one inch, then they have to come back to us.
Okay, sir, I, I'm sorry.
That changes the application.
I thought I was, I was picked to talk. I didn't mean to butt in.
That's, that's okay. I just thought I was going crazy. That you are okay to talk. That's fine. We still had it open to the public.
Okay, sir, I'm sorry.
We all, we all have to get, uh, accustomed to the new age of meetings.
I know. I just keep on going into, and I'm seeing RT, RT. So I didn't know, I didn't know what that meant. Now I'm changing JM. I'm, I'm not seeing anyone anymore.
Are you on the phone or are you on video?
I'm on the phone video. I, I joined, I joined the little thing that I was sent and I was doing fine.
Oh, you're doing fine now. I'm just, it, it's new to us too, sir. This is the first night that we've used it. Um, I know some of the boards that I use for work. I'm a construction worker. I don't use this at work. So it's a little new to me as well.
I hear you. Well, thank you for indulging me.
You're very welcome, sir. All right, so, um, it sounded like we wanted to put it to a vote. So we need to close both parts of the hearing first. So I'll take a motion for that. Let me ask the applicant, anything else you'd like to say before I close the hearing?
No, Mr. Chairman, all set.
Okay, all set.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the, oh, sorry.
I haven't heard from, uh, I haven't heard from Mr. Hassler. Haven't seen who will be at the-
I, I'm, yes, no problem. Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you were still with us.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, Nancy, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
Motion's been made by Nancy.
Second.
Seconded by Ray. All in favor? Aye. That's unanimous. Any discussion? No?
No.
Aye.
Someone make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve LePo, um, LePo Lee Companies on behalf of Daskum Road Development LLC for variance from section 5291 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaws to construct an electronic message center sign billboard located adjacent to interstate 93 as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 146 Daskum Road, Andover, Andover. Accessors map, 113 lot 24, zoned heavy industrial.
Hold on one second. Hold on. Okay. I just wanted to double check that the property is located in Andover. That's-
The company is, right.
No, said property is located at 146 Daskum Road.
Daskum Road, Andover.
Andover.
Mm-hmm.
All right, that's the way it was advertised. And you did say with plans filed with this board.
Yes.
Which means if anything gets changed, that was our, our vote. Okay, motion's been made. I need a second, Ray.
Second.
Seconded by Ray. So we're going to do a roll call vote. All in favor? Nancy?
Aye.
Ray?
Nay.
Okay, chair is an aye. Opposed? Ray?
Correct.
You're a nay, correct, Ray?
That's correct.
Okay. So the vote is, um, two in favor, one opposed. Okay. And I think that's it for the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
So is that, that's our last item, right?
Yes.
Any old business?
Nope.
Any new business?
Nope.
This whole video thing's pretty new.
Yeah.
I hope it worked out well for the people at home. It seemed to work out okay for us.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we'll get better. So that, that's, it worked out fine. Kind of have to get used to those people on the phone. I'm glad they call in. I'm glad they're, I'm glad they're participating. If anybody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded excitedly.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Stay safe, wash your hands.
Stay safe, guys. Have a good night.
Bye. Thanks. Bye, everybody.